On behalf of urban infra communication, Cole Hartley welcome you all in this special webinar on the occasion of International Women's Day 2022. First of all, I wish all the dynamic ladies a very happy Women's Day. The whole world is moving towards achieving gender balance. It is moving towards equality, both men and women. The change is something that is needed. Now, situation is changing and it is getting better. Women are working hard and breaking all the glass ceiling around the world. Today, we are going to discuss how India can achieve gender equality in urban infrastructure. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce and welcome amazing ladies on our guest panel who believe in breaking stereotypes and shall be sharing their wisdom with us today. I am delighted to introduce to you Mrs. Namita Maharashtra Ma'am, Director Finance National Capital Region Transport Corporation Limited.
Good evening everybody.
Good evening ma'am. Mrs. Namita possesses over twenty-five year rich experience in the finance domain and served at various key position in government railways. Welcome ma'am. And now, I am equally delighted to welcome Mrs. Vinita Shrivastava, Executive Director Railway Board Indian Railways. Mrs. Vinita possesses over twenty-five year rich experience in the engineering domain and served at various key positions in Indian railways. Welcome, welcome Vinita ma'am.
Thank you, Namaskar.
Namaskar. I extended a warm welcome to Dr. Amita Singh, Lead Health Safety and Environment CDM Smith Doha Qatar. Dr. Amita is an experienced international and national occupational health, safety and environment professional, over nineteen years rich experience. Welcome ma'am.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon to you all, Happy Women's Day.
Happy Women's Day.
Thank you.
I also extend a warm welcome to A R Priyanka Kumar, Urban Planner Gujarat Infrastructure Development Board Government of Gujarat. Mrs. Priyanka is well-known architect and urban planner. She has rich experience in urban infrastructure planning, public administration, monitoring and evaluation refers and urban governance. Now, moving forward with our today's topic, we want to ask Namita ma'am. Hello. Hello.
Hello, yes, I can hear you.
We want to ask Namita ma'am that what is the exact meaning of gender equality? Is it similar to gender discrimination? Why it matters especially in the time of crisis like COVID-19?
Well, by gender equality, it would imply that irrespective of the gender, everybody has equality of opportunity, has equal rights, has the same liberty and access to resources, access to opportunities. That is what would be gender equality. By gender discrimination, one would mean that actually gender discrimination could be negative, it could also be positive. So, in a scenario of negative gender discrimination, it would obviously be detrimental to the particular gender. So, in case women are denied something on the basis of their gender, when it is a negative gender discrimination and it conflicts with gender equality. On the other hand, a positive gender discrimination which is an enablement of sorts would get along with gender equality and does not, for example, we may provide, for example, in NCRTC, we provide flexible hours to women or you know some such opportunities, then that is a part of enabling them, that doesn't conflict with gender equality. There is no discrimination on that ground. So, I think the two need to be viewed in that context. So far as COVID is concerned, I think there are two issues. One is that there has been a lot of loss of jobs and there has been a wave of thought which says that you know, since men are the sole bread owners, or since men are the bread owners, so the first opportunity of employment as and when it comes should be to the men and it should be secondly to the ladies. That is one aspect of it. And the second aspect has been of course work from home, which has, in many cases, it has been stated that it has been unfair to women because it has put a lot of pressure on them and also there have been cases of abuse also. So, these issues have come up because of COVID-19. So far as the preference to men is concerned, I think in an economic activity, one should see the efficiency of outcomes. So, whosoever is the better suited candidate should be, you know, given the preference rather than the one, rather than arguing by this kind of a social equality kind of approach. The one who is better suited should be provided the opportunity. And so far as work from home issues are concerned, I think they arise more out of the, you know, sharing of work at home and the practices that are there. So, for that, I think a lot of social, shall we say, a lot of the social media needs to be used or people need to be, you know, counselled for it, that equal sharing is required where women are working. So, those are my thoughts on this.
Thank you very much ma'am, that was very insightful. Now, moving onward, next second question is for Vinita ma'am. Vinita ma'am, do you think gender equality must be a matter of right and we need to raise more voice? What does infrastructure have to do with gender equality?
That's a very interesting question. I didn't catch one word in that. Do you think?
Do you think gender equality must be matter of right and we need to raise more voice?
Raise more voice, okay.
Yes.
Gender equality can almost never be a matter of right because you don't choose to be born a woman or a man. And in the cultural context, you have something called Desh Kalpatra, okay? So, which country you are from, what time you are born in and you as an individual, your family, relationships, your position, your sibling order, etc. So, from that point onwards, your lifetime, your working life as a woman or a man in society, in the country you are born in, in the gender you are born in, comes into play. Raising your voice is perhaps not the choice of raising an issue, particularly in Southeast Asian countries because a lot of development economics and feminine empowerment studies will give you a concept called WEIRD, W E I R D. So, you have countries that are western, educated, industrialized and rich democracies. And these imported studies don't automatically apply to that scenario which women like me, you and the others on this panel and the people who are listening to us. We are not part of those weird set of people. We are born in a certain cultural context. We work in certain industries which are not heavily populated with women workers and managers. And so, the manner in which we either raise your voice or without raising your voice, put forward our points becomes very important. So, I'll close with that and let you continue with the other panelists too.
Thank you so much ma'am. Now, my next question is with Amita ma'am. How street lights, public transportation and pedestrian paths enable women to move around safely and independently?
Thank you for choosing me and this sensitive issue. The basic amenities help to overall safety, all especially for when comes to gender and the illumination place less prone any unfactable event. Consider the more safer than other places. In case of pedestrian walkaway, we are talking. As the provided safe access, we need purpose difference evident when we see good areas, basic amenities and poor without having any facilities. That's needed and because for safety concern point of view. And I think one of the example, our India, in India, DMRC and Metro Project, NRC TC, they are, they are very vigilant on this street light pedestrian in all that.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Now, my next question is with Priyanka ma'am. Give some international example to, hello ma'am.
I'm audible.
Yes ma'am. Can I proceed?
Yes.
Okay, ma'am, give some example of international, sorry, international examples to achieve gender equality in terms of transportation.
Okay, in terms of transportation.
Yeah.
First of all, I would like to congratulate all on the Women's Day. Wish you all a very good day. And I would like to thank all the team who organized this type of webinars. And now the question is about international examples of women's safety in transportation. Am I right Shreya?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so first of all, I would like to clear one thing, that India is not only a country facing these type of booking issues in case of transportation. There are so many countries such as Bhutan, Russia, they are also facing the problem in terms of women's safety in transportation. And like India, they are also, you know, some example like women, the coach, the women coach, for example, in metros, we have a separate coach.
Ma'am, sorry for interrupting, but your voice is clear not coming.
Okay. Okay, now I'm audible. Am I audible right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if you take the example of international, we can take the example of South Korea, where the central government has established some type of guidelines for the women's friendly cities. There are women delivery policy to Seoul in Russia, in which there is a public parking zone separate for women and in which the height of sidewalk ledges goes lowered for the female pedestrian movement. And we can also take the example of women's safety brand called Taxi Projects of various countries like USA, Germany, New Zealand. And you know, there is a assist, a phone service, a phone service which sends the plate number, the departure time and the location via a particular text message to the family members of women who is using the taxi at the time of night. So, to encourage women's participation for different countries, engage the different women in the policy making processes. More than sixty percent of the women are there in the public decision process. And the thirty percent participation of movement is, thirty percent participation of the women is taken in the improvement of local markets for food groups, for non-murderous competition. Twenty percent of the staff in BRTS and MRTS had been, is women itself. So, that to engage more and more women in this case. So, we can take the example of Vietnam, we can take the example of Austria, where they developed a special smart city itself only for women. Where the staff is women and where all this, irrespective of class four, all are women. So, this type of initiative where we engage the women in decision-making process, where we may engage them, you know, a community participation is most, which can change the entire city. The city planners and urban planners will think how to develop a smart city, how to make a city women-friendly city. So, it's a Delhi, whether a women-friendly city or a smart city, or a smart city itself become a women-friendly city. In this case, I think community participation, statehood consultation is most from the side of women itself. Then they will form a board, they will tell their issues, their challenges, whatever they face, they will put the things on the board. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Now, coming back to Namita ma'am. Okay, ma'am, I want to ask you that men are generally owners of personal transport, having greater control over spending family finance. Women are much more dependent on public transport to move about the city. How can we change this scenario towards financial freedom of women?
So, I think this issue has two aspects to it. One and the two are actually correlated. One is the access to public transport and the second is the economic, the economic independence of women. But being in the urban infra space, I would rather say that, you know, I would rather have the man move over to the public transport than to think of, provide, you know, encouraging women to drive their cars. So, like in the international, internationally, if you see in the developed countries, everybody uses public transport. So, let us make our public transport better that even men use that public transport rather than think of, you know, women driving their individual cars. But, you know, that apart, the fact remains that accessibility to public transport actually will trigger economic activity. Right now, for example, we are creating this RRTS from Delhi to Mera. Now, along this corridor, we are trying to ensure by various means that we are taking measures to ensure that women come onto our system. Once they come onto our system, they will have access to all economic opportunities in this entire range, in the entire of Delhi NCR. So, you see the kind of change that, you know, that urban transport can play. And with that, they will have the financial freedom to do what they want to do, whether they want to buy a car or they want to buy a house, whatever they would like to do. So, the issue boils down to this, that are we, are we able to skill our women? Are we able to make them independent? Are we providing them access? So, at NCRTC, we have been giving it a lot of thought and, you know, we are taking several measures. First of all, there are studies, in fact, a recent study by the Ola Mobility Institute stated that fifty-nine percent women travel by public transport, but eighty-one percent of those who were surveyed said that they feel pretty unsafe at night. They feel safe during the day, but they feel unsafe at night. So, we are ensuring that, you know, there are safe pavements available so that women feel comfortable, they are well illuminated, there are CCTV cameras, there is a dedicated coach for women, there are seats in the other coaches also for women. Plus, we are also, we have a program through which we are, we will sensitize drivers of, you know, the other modes of public transport towards women and so that they learn, they learn the soft skills of how to deal with them so that they feel comfortable. Another aspect is last mile connectivity. So, on this also, NCRTC is trying to pay a lot of attention so that, you know, women, in this survey, the women also said that they feel unsafe because of lack of last mile connectivity. So, they get down from the metro or they get down from the bus, but reaching their home is an issue because there they have to take some private transport in which they are not comfortable or they have to walk. So, taking care of last mile connectivity will also actually enable women to come onto the system so they will have access to that transport. So, I think urban transit agencies should try to create a system whereby women, for that matter, why women, everyone should actually be motivated to use the public transport system rather than use private. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
May I add one thing? Can we add one thing?
Yeah, sure.
That's a very true point, last mile connectivity. You know, it's a need of the art, but we should go for multimodal transportation. So that when we are using airport, after this, we may connect airport with metro, then metro with, you know, fancy cycle, one can use a cycle and then go to the metro. So, multimodal transportation connectivity is the solution so that, you know, when we have a peer drive family at the time of night. So, multimodal transportation is one of the skill.
So, yeah, so I would like to add here that here in NCRTC or for the RRTS systems, our stations, wherever possible, we are providing the multi, we are providing the multimodal integration. So, we are integrating it with Delhi Metro, with ISBT, with the railway station.
Correct.
Whenever possible, we are doing that in a way that people don't have to come out of the system and there are say walkways or skyways available so that they don't, you know, exit the system at all and there is seamless connectivity with others. We're doing that.
Thank you. Thank you ma'am. Now, moving forward, I want to ask Vinita ma'am that what are the key issues and concern relating to gender in urban infrastructure?
Shreya, there is, there is no over emphasizing the point that Namitaji just made that the last mile connectivity. After all, whatever you do to a transport system, if the woman can't reach and board the train or the metro safely, then it is literally of no use. And there are international benchmarks there, so that is certainly a starting point. Over and beyond that, there are two ways to look at it. One, women who as users of the system and another women as the staffing of the management, control, operations and services. And not to forget, Namitaji is the area of the occupational safety of women at the construction site when the systems are being built. Now, whether you are inside the system as a woman designing and planning and executing and implementing these transportation solutions or you are a user, both ways you have a role to play, not only in sensitizing and vocalizing your needs, but also in ensuring that, you know, there's, in feminism, they say there's a system of the door shut behind you, that you enter a room and you are the only one there. But then the door is shut firmly behind you and other women, other talented personnel, whether in companies or in, as users are not able to come in. So, that shouldn't happen. We should ensure if everyone here who is a leader in their field should ensure that other talented and qualified women also get to enter and demonstrate their capabilities.
Thank you ma'am. Now, Amita ma'am, what are the key concern for women working on construction site? How can we overcome the health and safety concerns?
What we can say, there is no safety concerns related now in construction field. People are well educated, needs to more awareness and they have to understand there. But if you go construction site, we needs to more wellness program, welfare facility to for provided by for them, so they will more attract to come. Yes, this is for me safer, I am talking on construction. Project, after project execution is fine, no issue. But during construction, you can see so many needs to improvement. But earlier it was, now why, what my experience for all in India, construction project very systematically aligned with. People are aware, people know each other respect and people know logically how they deliver job. So, there is, I think, room always required and streamlined system needs to be. But I think, okay, everything.
Okay, thank you.
You, you wanted to say something?
I want to request, Amitaji, Doha Qatar must be a really challenging workplace. Maybe an anecdote or a story which. Any workplace challenge you have in Doha, you have done it. Because I'm not there, I didn't see it.
Challenge, when I came Qatar, for me, it was very good. For me, it was very good, positive challenge. Because once before coming India, people were saying, this is Middle East, you will be not able to succeed. And I'm, I'm working past eight year in here Qatar itself. And people were saying, there is so many discrimination, so many safety issue. But what I find out, rather than say like that, I am very more safer for every. I can, I can visit anytime in site, I can move anytime over the city. There is no rule, regulation is logistic is very good and facility is very good. As per Namitamam say, rather than we promote individual driving, we have to promote public transport. So, there is public transport and they are promoting public transport for public and very systematically order. And I cannot say my India is not driven positive way. My India is a role model for so many ways in construction, especially in metro projects. And I, because I work both way and there is, I feel very proud. I came from India, I get all culture from India, expertise and driven by here. And same, just a matter of multinationality with working and rest of the culture are same.
Very interesting.
Now, moving forward, Priyanka ma'am. I have a question for you. Only nine percent of women in Indian cities feel public transport is completely safe, while three percent claim it is not completely unsafe. According to the report titled, "What do women and girl want from urban mobility? How can India achieve hundred percent safety parameter for women's in public transport?"
Okay, first of all, I would like to explain the definition of gender equality versus gender equity. I think you all are familiar with the term equality versus equity. So, nowadays, what we are doing, we are working in a terms of equity. Okay, yes, there should be a separate seats in our Delhi buses for women. There should be a separate coach for women in the metro. You know, according to, you know, as, as in a young blood or when we go to the different countries we see, we should remove the concept of giving a special treatment to women. There should be equal treatment when we talk about gender equality. First of all, yes, it's the need of the art, when we talk about India, it's need of the art that we must have a separate women coach. But we should treat women equally. It's like equality, it's not we need, no, we do not need a separate coach, no, we do not need a separate seat. What we need, we need just a respect. So, first of all, these are moral issues should be taken and considered. And when we talk about in the terms of public transportation, there should be low fleet buses. There should be, there should be a proper design of the buses in terms. I have so many things to tell you, for example. For example, when we, when we design the bus, it should be designed in terms of each and every female we use it. The buses may be friendly for pregnant ladies, it should be friendly for old ladies. There should be a side handles for a physical handicap person. So, the buses may be user-friendly, especially for pregnant ladies, for kids, for girls of every age. There should be a sanitary napkins availability of buses. So, these type of small, small issues can be taken in a terms of infrastructure development. We may install CCTV cameras, you know, there is a new design of e-tonics. When you, you just ping up one rupee and two rupee coin. So, there is a camera outside the toilet, the person tells us what to do, when to do. So, there should be a live camera on each and every bus where we can put a number and a person may teach us online. Okay, you can go for a seat number twenty-two, it's safe, you may sit for a seat number seventy-two, it's safe. So, it's online teaching to young girls, to small kids, may help us to go alone everywhere at any time, it should be twenty-four into seven. There should be a taxis, we can, we can engage women, women health line with Ola and Uber, where I can text the plate number, the photo of the driver. Where I can text the plate number, the photo of the driver, uh the texture of the color to my family members with the help of the particular uh facility. So it's a D G platform. It can connect each and every uh aspect of my birth, my metro. All the M R P D A, particular digital platform and it will help us to. Uh proceed further and yes, but a sports mindset, we need uh equality, not equity.
So may I just add to what uh Priyanka said that uh the aspect of, you know, you're being able to share your drive. Uh with your family or things like that. So uh we are hoping that in the app that we will create for our passengers. There will be a kind of an S O S or you know, sharing your movement so that your uh. Uh so that the the women passengers will feel safe and their families will also not be worried. So. The moment they board the train, so you know, they will be able to share. So those things are being thought of and being incorporated. And this so that we make good uh women friendly uh system.
Okay. Uh ma'am, after this webinar, I'll contact you also. I have so many good ideas for this. Uh I may. Okay, and one thing, actually, I would like to add one thing, there was a question for the construction workers. Uh the workers who work at the site. Also, when we talk about the, or when we talk about India, more than ninety percent of the women are working in informal sectors. Less than five percent are working like us in a formal sector. So there should be expansion of I C Ds, there should be stretch facilities there. When women are working, are are therefore work, there should be a stretch facility. So they uh, you know, it is very important to feed their kids also. They are earning just to fulfill their tummies. So there should be a re-betonization of the plate scheme. I can give you some of the examples. We have a good examples of Tamil Nadu, uh Tamil Nadu and Karnataka. The states are working and they are giving rupees eighteen thousand to uh to a lady who is pregnant. So these type of schemes irrespective of infrastructure, these type of schemes may help them. To come on a site on regular basis and to feed their kids at the same site. So the stretch facilities at the construction worker sites, it should be given. You know, stretch is, stretch is twenty kilometers far from the construction site. So there is no, no meaning of providing a stretch facility to that only. So and you know of.
Yeah, yeah, continue, continue.
Yeah, and uh when we talk about the construction sets. So construction sets is always three to four percent in every detail project report. We can use that fund construction says. To design a crutch at the construction site. So this is my proposal with the May four.
Amita ma'am, you want to say something?
Yeah, actually, uh uh Priyanka uh taken very valid point during construction phase that I say to you. Uh key, that's needs to wellness and welfare facility needs to improve, rest, everything is fine. And but my very positive experience during uh that phase in India itself, I was in the uh Delhi metro first, second phase. And I was pregnant and I worked till last day. Till Saturday I worked and Sunday by a delivered baby. So I am saying.
I am working for informal workers.
Yeah, and uh I was going at site. I was not like office working. I used to internal and it was a network and that is very famous airport express line. So I get all facilities and wellness that time. I was not a special treatment. You get, but uh I say, I proud D M R C system, they organize and uh some uh way. But yes, I I agree with you, there is needs to like software industry creatures and all that. Uh but project is short form, short term, thus the uh what I understand, this is the reason this wellness. System is not implemented, but it should be. Yeah.
Thank you ma'am. Uh now, I have a common question for you all. Uh how can India achieve gender equality in urban infrastructure sector such as railway, metro, urban transportation?
So shall I start on this?
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
So uh. I think that, you know, uh trans, as I said earlier, the transport is uh, I think the most important the uh means. Or for providing economic opportunities to uh women and access to safe transport. Uh safe convenient transport is uh is a very, is a very strong uh prerequisite for this. And as uh urban infrastructure organizations, I think we play a very important role. Uh and we can play an even more important role in doing this. First of course, at ensuring that we are able to. Uh employ uh women who are capable. Uh there is no gender discrimination. For instance, uh in N C R T C, we have been actually showcasing our women who are civil engineers. They are doing the toughest of the jobs, handling teams of men, dealing with contractors, doing uh the uh. Uh underground, uh working with the underground tunneling team, working or you know, with the ensuring. Uh safe installation of bearings at the wire duct. So if you actually see uh the kind of work that they're doing, it mesmerizes me also. I mean, I really appreciate that they're able to do that kind of work. So we are providing a completely gender neutral field over here. And uh there is, there is no such thing that women cannot do. So that thought is not there. So. Uh when we recruit, we don't see that, you know, for this uh work, women are not suited or things like that. No. Uh if they have the requisite qualification, if they are capable of doing it, then so be it. They will, and there is no. You know, a soft corner for them or anything. Once they are here, they will perform as any other employee. So. Uh that because she's a woman, so she will go at the, she will go at five thirty, she will not, no, there are night, there are. You know, uh the working is going around round the clock. So as per the demand of work, they do perform. So I think that makes them very strong. They become strong uh ambassadors of. Uh this kind of work and when we disseminate this information, I think they become a very strong inspiration for other ladies to join in. And uh to see that, you know, there is nothing that can stop them. So uh that is on the part of uh our employees. On the uh, on the passenger uh front, it is, I think the role is very important. It's uh, we need to look at the outcome, not only just to produce a system, but we need to plan to ensure that ultimately uh the women. Who uh whom we expect to use this system, actually are able to use it. They, whatever are the requirements, we are able to fulfill whatever we have discussed during this webinar about, you know, safety, about uh uh say. Uh last mile connectivity, safe movement or having that app for providing access, multimodal integration, all these things. They should actually be uh included in uh in any system that is henceforth planned or wherever we can make some changes, we should do that. Uh the bigger, uh and even bigger role can be played if wherever we are developing these systems. We are able to take the communities and the people along with us. And uh we are, for example, when we are doing this uh corridor along Delhi Merit. We are hoping that we will be able to, you know, uh provide self-defense skills to the girls in colleges. We are hoping to uh empower the ladies, we uh maybe we will be able to skill them in driving e-rickshaws because that will. Uh that will actually help us in providing last mile connectivity for ladies. So we hope that we will be able to skill them in driving taxis and driving e-rickshaws. And uh also beyond that, look at more uh uh greater social responsibility in terms of. Uh increase, since the economic activity will get increased along the corridor because of the coming of the R R T S. We hope that the ladies uh uh along the system, we will be able to skill them in various aspects, say modern farming practices. Or you know, other such skills which will enable them also to become economically independent. Maybe they, you know, take up these activities. They will uh their produce will find uh markets within the N C R and uh they will be able to sell their products etcetera. So a comprehensive, a holistic approach to this, uh if you know, an entity were to take up along with the project, I think it will go a long way. In, you know, uh promoting gender inclusiveness or uh bringing in uh women into the system and uh. So I think that's all, okay.
Uh well, thank you ma'am. Uh you know ma'am, uh here different institutions should come. To meet these type of personalities like Namita ma'am, or different institutions should come to visit how a particular institution is working. And then they should some capacity building programs in their organization because it is just about to change the behavior and the public awareness. Some organizations are doing very good, but other organizations should learn the best practices. Uh it is a need of the art to have a behavioral change programs. Capacity buildings for the women who are working, who are not working. So public awareness is also one of the angle which uh there should be a light on that angle.
So um wonderful points, but I'd like to bring the heritage perspective of it. Whatever is my study of transport heritage in India. And particularly rail heritage. Transport in India takes on the color of. The culture and society and community practices that are prevalent. We can talk about two hundred years ago when there was no trains. So the uh women were in the palkis uncovered and everyone else was in horses and elephants. And then railways came in and brought tremendous socio-economic change, mobility. Uh today, forty percent, in another ten years, forty percent of our workforce, women are going to be in cities. And what is the kind of system that is going to be available for them to move from home to work? It is embedded in culture, it's embedded in society and economy. So behavior change works both ways. You can't just change the metro system and then expect, you know, things to react, but yes, it goes both way. That lovely point about the woman e-rickshaw driver. About three women's days, three years ago on the same date on Women's Day, I was on a panel with a young lady. Who was a pink services driver for Uber. She was a lady and she was driving the Uber in Delhi. Some passenger, very crowded area near Paharganj, he said, are you, you can't drive here, you can't drive here, I'll take you down here. So this young lady, she said that hit a nerve in me and she took five rounds of that street. Just to practice, she left all her clients, it took five rounds. It was so nice to just listen to her and then uh railways employees, one lakh more people, women at various levels. Uh to see their uh, the the way they negotiate their careers. Careers have so many stages for women. Uh you have a break when you have family or you get married or you have postings and transfers and whatnot. But still the manner in which they manage to negotiate and empower themselves with or without support is really inspiring. That's the way forward, I guess.
Thank you ma'am. Uh Amita ma'am, you want to say something? On this.
Uh I just added, uh Vinitha ma'am and Priyanka. Uh already uh some of, some short offset system already. We require needs to improvement awareness where we are lacking and need to one-to-one each other chain bonding. We have to encourage each other, right? Not ourselves, other ladies also. Please come out your comfort zone. There is safe chances and there is scope for you. Not only construction field, you. Where you are working, where your desire, where you comfortable, you can work from home also. So many activities depends on your uh sensitivity, depends on your skills, depends on your uh choice. You can do any and this is the right time for everyone or here is no matter of equality. Here is no matter of gender biasism, just needs to respect each other and maintain to integrity. That is also uh clear, keep uh women's are like uh needs to climate change to imbalance. So there is very clear, nature also shows us, we have to uh respect each other and that's needed.
Thank you ma'am. Uh anything else anyone want to point out?
Because I'm working here Middle East and uh what, which area I have to take in my country. Here is a typical uh Prada hishop system and people, but you you won't believe. Young ladies are working with our client side and contractor side, or they are with, coming with their their dressing system. And they are very strong, very knowledge wise. It means there is no discrimination and gender in all that, or they are working. So uh other countries, international point of view, like Priyanka already stated, the other uh Europe countries. And uh these countries are, western countries are promoting uh women for in transport. In India, already uh aligned, uh Namita ma'am is the example for us and uh. Vinitha ma'am, uh example for us, Priyanka example for us. And in construction, so many ladies are there who worked and paved up the job in construction especially.
As you said, Namita ma'am, Vinitha ma'am and Priyanka ma'am, you are also example for us. Yeah. Uh anything else, uh Namita ma'am or Vinitha ma'am?
No, I uh I think uh what is more important, what is most important is uh. That when we plan our projects, we give emphasis to the issues which need to be looked at uh right from the planning stage. And uh when we develop the culture of an organization, we ensure that uh you know, uh there is gender neutrality. Uh and uh and ladies feel safe and comfortable working uh in the organization. I think that is of utmost importance. Uh it's also uh, what is important is not that, you know, the ladies of course will have to find encouragement from within themselves. They will have to make themselves bold and strong, but a lot of responsibility lies on the uh other people in the organization or the management or. You know, to uh en- encourage and to enable the women to come forward and to participate. And uh as in a family, you know, a a woman uh. If if she finds support in the family or encouragement encouragement in the family, we find that she's able to, you know, there's nothing that can stop her. So uh similarly, if in an organization uh the support is available, uh the enablement is available. I think there's nothing that can stop women from coming and joining uh such organizations.
As a closing statement, I'd like to say that empowerment works on uh, let's say, micro meso and macro levels. On a micro level, it's the individual, it's you. At a meso level, it's your relationship with community, society and your employer. And at a macro level, it's all the policies, things like gender budgeting, things like fiscal tools, things like planning. There's infrastructures financed usually from loans, World Bank, A D B etcetera, as the Namita ma'am is the expert. Now in that waterfall financing, thode trickles aur sheete bhi pad jaye agar gender equality ki taraf. I'm sure that huge differences in systems, in planning, in design. And in employing women where they matter most and where they make a difference. That will pave the way forward. Thanks, Shreya.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh you are very insightful and. Really, uh hume bahut zada aap log se seekhne ke liye mila aaj aur. I want to thank you all once again. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Shreya, this opportunity and uh give us a together and chance to meet us. Uh each other and we knows uh our views and uh thoughts. Thank you, Vinitha ma'am. Thank you, Namita ma'am.
Thank you so much ma'am. Thank you every ma'am for the amazing uh informations. I hope every women are there looking this video and this will help for, helpful for all them. And me bhi jo ghar pe hai aur jo kuch nahi kar sakti hai, waage badenge aur kuch karenge apki life mein.
Ghar pe hai kuch nahi kar sakti mat boli, ghar me hai to ghar chalenge, baar hai to rail chalenge, plane udaienge. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.